I call this meeting to order, roll call please.
Yes, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Garing?
Present.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Lanning? Ms. Garcia?
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there is no audience participation, correct?
No.
Okay, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
I like it.
Thank you, Rick, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rhonda. And whenever you're ready.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Five to zero. Items on discussion, bond. Project update?
Yes, give you an update of where we are on our different projects from the April bond. The athletic fields, tracks, as you know, ATG was approved as the turf supplier. And then Mid-America Golf, you approved at the last meeting for the site work. It's created a little bit of an interesting wrinkle with us having two different companies doing that. So, we're working on some different things with contract language and stuff like that. There's not any dirt going to be moved right now for a little bit with all the snow on the ground anyway. So, we're working those things out, but everything is on track for us to still be able to be on time as we planned. They're starting to do some core work, soil samples at each of the fields. So, even with weather being like it is, they are still proceeding with some of those things. So, that's where we're at on that. Hosea, the addition there. Good progress down there over break. We did tie in to the new building from the old building. So, that project is moving along very well there. And we anticipate it will be done on time as we thought in early April. Road projects, Carden Park, work actually started right before break. Obviously, that's not going on quite as quickly right now. But, that is going as anticipated there. We will have walkthrough later this week at Oak Grove. To look at that site and start to develop plans with Goldburn. And so, things are moving there. And again, that will start as soon as school's out in June. Sidewalks, Pickett and Parkway currently out for bid. We had a pre-bid meeting last week and had a very good turnout of contractors last week. So, we hope to have some good competitive bids there. Entercom Systems, we did have a little bit of a hiccup there with some installation over the break. Or, we were planning to start some installation over the break, but we had some shipping delays. And so, that didn't get started. But, we did get some wiring started in buildings that don't have it yet. So, Carden Park was started. As soon as we get the rest of that material in, they will start at Parkway. And Pickett are the first two schools they're going to start in on the installation there. So, that's moving along, but we had a little, we were hoping to get some work done over break, but we had a shipping delay there. Fine Arts, Fine Arts, let's see, let me look and see. All middle school risers got removed over the break. Those rooms look tremendously different, once you take those built-in risers out. New paint, new carpet installs completed. One of two bandrooms at Lafayette is completed with new carpet and paint. The auditorium carpet and paint have been ordered. You're going to have a change order come to you here at the board meeting this month, related to the kiln installs. We thought we might have that, we need to do a little bit of electrical upgrade. The electrical boxes are a little bit undersized, once we put those kilns on for that load. So, I'll be bringing you a change order here in two weeks for that. But, everything is on track there as well. HVAC upgrades, Schneider has been working on some things there. I think with everything's going on today, it's important to make sure everyone understands that the amount of money we have in the bond is not going to be enough to take care of the Dyken units at all buildings. And so, we are evaluating where we can get the best bang for our buck still with that, as they kind of put some of those plans together. And then, we may have to do some in-house stuff as well along with that. I had a conversation with Casey and Daniel today. We're trying to build some CIP money in for next year, to put it in our own budget along with what we're doing with some of the bond stuff. So, those things progressing there. And then, science and technology upgrades, I got a nice up break from Dr. Studer. Over the break, first phase of STEM resources were delivered to buildings. It's a big step in that. She wanted to give a shout out to Michael Hayes and Skylar Loff Thompson. She said they embraced the spirit of Santa, to make sure those materials were all delivered with care and efficiency. And then, Phase Two materials have been ordered and are arriving at the warehouse as we speak. So, we're starting to get those things to teachers. I know stations also has professional development planned for those teachers, so that we can get the most impact out of that improved equipment and get those into the classroom and get them started. So, happy to answer any questions you might have about any of those projects going on. But, a lot of good things are happening around the district right now.
That is amazing, Dr. Seeger, thank you so much. If there are no questions or comments, let's move on to number two, the one-range plan update. Is that you, Dr. Seeger?
Yeah, I'll take this one. The meeting tonight will be kind of twofold. First of all, you will hear from DLR and Nab Holtz, who is our construction management team and our architect. And they're going to kind of walk you through the $150 million plan for a new high school. And, this is your time to ask any questions you might have in regards to that. I know that the number was closer to $180 million, whenever we began these discussions. And we had a meeting on Thursday to discuss getting that to 150. So, they're going to kind of walk through that. And they're going to provide specifics that haven't been provided to you yet. And, so this is your opportunity, or your time, to ask any questions. Because what we'll have to do is we will have to finalize the ballot language on the 27th. And that will have to be approved by the Board of Education that night, so we can get it to the county clerk's office on Tuesday, the 28th. The second piece will be LJ Hart and Company will be here to talk about the finances. I know that there were some questions in regards to how quickly the turnaround would be for another high school. And so, they'll provide you with some timelines and some specifics in regards to that. This is also an opportunity for you to ask possibly what kind of specific ballot language items will be on the ballot, you know, how specific does it need to be? They can provide you with examples of other school districts that they have worked in the past and what that looks like. It's not that these guys have worked with a lot of school districts that run ballot issues to build new high schools. And so, this should be a good learning experience for you as a Board of Education. And I hope you take full advantage of it. Any questions in regards to that, before we get started?
Well, when you say that, it's all right when we attend those meetings. When they're planning or when they're talking about these things.
Okay. Kevin, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, we'll jump in really quick. I'll just do a little bit of preamble to give you a little bit about what we've been doing since the last time we saw you. Pretty much, I think we left the room last time with the directive to look at, how do we get 150 million done, based on everything else we knew? In that process of doing that, we also looked at a couple of other sites. So, you're going to see a different site than you saw last time. And, we put our team together, once Nab Holtz was on board that night. We met on Wednesday, and we've been working every day together since then about where everything is going. So, we're bringing you a site, a location, a building, and what are all the amenities in that building, as well as what that price is and what those amenities are. So, it's kind of, and I'm going to let everybody else do that. But, before I do that, I want to make sure, I remind myself to have you guys know everyone that we're going to, you're going to be working with over the next few years. I think it's really important. So, from our office, it's Mike Fahey, Megan Masterson. From Nab Holtz today, it's Brett Collins, he's got a big crew also, but it's just him tonight. And from Creo Clark, we've got Terry and Aaron back there that are propping us up and making us look good. So, anyway, I'm going to let Mike kind of begin the process, have a conversation about it, and we'll go from there.
Thank you guys for having us back, happy to be here. So, what we're going to start with is kind of a bit of a redo on what we showed you last time. But, as Kevin mentioned, we've started to look at three new sites. So, previously, there were three original sites. Some of those, the families who owned them ended up not being interested in sale. And so, we've started to look at three new sites of those three. The one that we have up on the board right now seems to be the most viable. And I know the real estate team is kind of talking to the different owners right now. So, hopefully, within the next, you know, series of weeks and months, we'll zero in on which site that's going to be. But, we decided to go ahead and do a test fit, like we did before, on one of those three sites, the one that we liked the most. And this is it. So, on this particular site, you can see the blue squiggly line that goes through the middle of the site, there's a creek and a watershed. The darker green area is a heavily wooded area. And then, there's buildable land to the north and south of that. And so, we took the approach of trying to concentrate most of our program on the south side of this creek. The street to the south edge of the drawing is the primary street that has had some road improvements and has quality concrete and good access and curbs and gutters and things of that nature. And so, we wanted to encourage most of the site circulation to come from the south. The street on the west is less improved, and we kind of want to discourage traffic along that street. So, we're treating it essentially as a one-access property with two entrances off the south end. Almost all of the building parking and amenity access comes in off the south. And so, the yellow bar that kind of steps to the south on the right there is the ridge of the site. And so, we've sighted the building so that it kind of sits up on top of a ridge and takes advantage of the views that look down into the creek bed below. And then, the front of the building would then be on the south there. We've also concentrated, as you can see, most of the athletic facilities would also be on the south side of the creek and concentrated over there on the corner. So, you'd have your combined competition soccer and football field would be that first one with the track around it. That would be a turf field with lighting, so all of your major events, your evening events, holding of district sporting events and things, that would all happen on that main field, the closest to the building. That does include a 2,500-seat grandstand and a 500-seat visitor bleacher on opposite sides of the field. The next field over that's striped for soccer there is a secondary competition field. It would maybe be for, if you have two events at one time, that's the second field. It is also turf. It also has lighting, I believe, in the base budget. And then, that could be the overflow, or it could be for JV sports or whatever. It's kind of just that secondary competition level field. The third large field to the left of that is a grass practice field. So, that would be practices, overflow, band practice, that kind of thing could happen there. And then, the kind of pizza pie shaped pieces are all your track and field sports, your throwing sports, your javelin, discus, shot put, all of that. They're all concentrated together, so that the coaches for those sports can have all of the students in the same area, so it's an efficient use of space there. You can see the six tennis courts on the south end, those are six competition tennis courts. We have excluded lighting from those, because it's a fairly high-dollar item. But, we're, you'll see in a future slide here that we've provided some cost options, where we have the total all-in budget of the base scope at just over 150 million. We're trying to hit that directive of yours. But, we do have some, a kind of menu of extra things that if you decided that you wanted to add on a couple amenities, we have a few of those for you to choose from. Athletic lighting is one of those things that you'll see. Moving up to the north, the baseball and softball complex, we do, we basically just ran out a room on the south side. We didn't, we could probably fit those on the south side, but it would make the site really compact. And there's a lot of topography on this site, and so it'd make it, if you make it too compact, what you'll end up with is a lot of expensive retaining walls. You won't be able to do as much of the grade changes with the dirt. So, it would drive costs up and make it a little bit too congested. So, we did put that program up on the north side of the creek. It does have its own remote parking lot. And we would just try to limit the number of vehicles that access the site up there. The yellow boxes that are near the athletic fields, the one on the south would be just an athletic support building, we call it athletic support building number one in the program documents. That would have your bathrooms, your concession stands, and it would have some space for your teams to go into, have team meetings during halftime and such. It wouldn't be, in this case, last time we showed you this, we were saying the locker rooms would be out there as well. But, that was a function of the old site, where it was more remote to the building. It's more cost-effective to include those locker rooms in the main building. And now that the site, the football complex is closer to the building, we would prefer to just keep the locker rooms in the building. So, that's just a halftime-type facility. And then, up on the north end, near the baseball and softball, that would also have a remote athletic support building for storage and concessions and also a batting cage. So, those are the major site amenities. Another thing is that pathway that you see kind of sneaking around the north part of the site. We do, we don't want students attending the baseball and softball events, practices and things, to have to walk all the way around to the western road to get to that part of the site. So, we do have included in cost one pedestrian bridge, just for foot traffic to cross the creek in a more efficient way and get up to that athletic complex. And then, the more circuitous pathways would probably just be mowed pathways that your district grounds crews keep mowed for things like cross-country could run out in the field there. But, it wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't necessarily incur the cost of putting paving on that slope hill. So, is there any questions about the overall site development that you're looking at here, before I move on? I will say one thing I forgot to mention, the westernmost part of the main school building, where it's dashed in, that is a 12,000-square-foot piece of building that is labeled as the Performing Arts Center. So, that's one of the cost options that we'll go through. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. But, one of the things that we've talked about is that we, in the base budget, are going to provide a performance theater, but it won't be the full auditorium performance hall. It'll be what some call it a studio theater. And it's more for like theater in the round, and it's a little bit more creative, but a little smaller, it's more affordable. So, still giving, still giving a performance space to the arts program. Absolutely, it'd be a fun space for them to learn and congregate and give their shows, but it just wouldn't be that full auditorium. Okay, so, to get to the overall budget and the square footage, you'll notice down here, let me see if I can get the light. So, the overall square footage, that's the most important number here, that's 237,000,700 square feet. That was a much larger number, the last time we came to you guys. That was the main driver of why the building was up in that $186 million range, I think, with all of the program included. I think we came with two options, one was 160-something and the other one was 180-something. We were able to, through meeting with your educators and your administrators, we were able to cut a whole lot of square footage out of this building, just figuring out what spaces you really need, what spaces might have been duplicated, you know, right sizing things for your student population and your projected enrollment numbers, and deciding, making some decisions like, okay, maybe we don't have the full performing arts theater that's 12,000 square feet. Now, we have a 3,600-square-foot smaller theater that's a different style of theater. And so, those types of decisions were able to get us down to that 237,000, 238,000 square-foot range, which is what brought the cost in line with the target budget of 150 million. So, a whole lot goes into these numbers. We could go line by line. I think it might not be necessary, but I'm ready to answer any questions that you have, specifically about what program may or may not be included. But, that is kind of the big, the big number is the 240, 240,000, a little less than that square footage. And that's how we got those numbers down. Any questions on program-specific? No?
Yeah, just to take a look at some of your adders.
Okay. All right, so Nab Holtz, our team at Nab Holtz has put together the construction estimate for us. I'm going to talk my way through this. If you have detailed money questions, I'll probably kick the answers over to Brett, but I'll just keep going for now. We have our all-in construction budget now at 126 million. The building itself would be the 108,300,000. So, those numbers have come down significantly. And, well, actually, the building itself is the 97 million, plus the 10.8 million for general site improvements. So, general site improvements are things like your parking lots, your roads, your regrading of things, any retaining walls that might need to be done, earthwork. If we encounter some underground stone, maybe there's some numbers in there for just what we might encounter. It's not, that 10.8 million is not inclusive of the exterior athletics program. So, the exterior athletics is then that additional 18.1 million. Included in that is all of the different elements that I talked through on the site plan. And, we have turf on both the football field and the soccer field. And then, we have grass right now for the practice field, baseball, and softball. And we do not have lighting on anything other than the main football field and the secondary soccer competition field. Then, moving down, the next 11.5 million is just, that's design and owner costs. That's things like fees and permit fees and civil engineering fees and geotechnical engineering and some of those things that don't actually, you know, they'll never end up in the building itself. It's just all the necessary bits and pieces that you need to get to where you're going. And then, we have another 12.6 million down there for fixtures, furnitures and equipment, technology and infrastructure. And then, so those are just the things that you guys will want to bring into the building, things that aren't necessarily bolted down, but you need them to function. And then, the last line, owner's contingency is, I believe that's a 3% of the total construction budget that is for unforeseen things. So, 3% is a nice, it's a conservative number. We've had projects that went tighter, and we were able to keep it within their tighter budgets. So, that's the kind of number that hopefully, at the end of the day, we get, you know, 50% of the way down the project, and you're not at 50% of contingency usage. And you can start to think about other things you might want to do with that money, but it's there as a just-in-case. So, that's, with all those numbers, that's how we got down to that 150.6 million. So, just a little bit over the 150-million-dollar target. But, that is giving you program for every student. There's nothing left out of this program. And, we've just right-sized the building and tried to get it down to where you need it to be. So, then I've mentioned some of these additional options. So, if you were to decide that you're comfortable going a little higher than that 150.6 million budget, we do have a short little menu here, all cart menu, where if you went, instead of doing the studio theater, which I, again, is 3,600 square feet, if you wanted to do that full performing arts center, and you wanted to have a 12,000-square-foot performing arts center with elevated seating and 700-person capacity, the difference in cost between those two pieces of program is about $6 million. It's that $5.9 million. So, you would take away the studio theater, and you would replace it with the more expensive performing arts center, if you wanted, if you chose that. Baseball and softball lighting, we have as a line item, that's about $700,000, and I'm rounding all of these, as you see. $700,000 gets you the lighting for the baseball and softball complex. So, it's a fairly significant piece of money, and it's something that the district could potentially do as a side project in the future. We would definitely run all of the necessary power out to that location. We'd have conduits in the ground, making sure that it's ready for lighting. But, it's something that maybe you could work into a capital outlay budget in the future. Save the money on the bond dollars now. Same with bleachers, baseball and softball bleachers. That $442,000, I believe, is 500-seat-capacity bleachers for each of the programs. So, that's something that we have not included in the base budget, again, could be added later. Fourth item is baseball and softball, changing from grass to synthetic turf. So, synthetic turf is easier maintenance, it's a little higher-end facility. If you're going to have a lot of games, if you're going to have a lot of, try to attract district and statewide events, that's the kind of thing that you might want to do in the future. But, it is a significant cost, and so, and it's something that could be deferred. And so, if your primary goal is to make sure that kids have a place to go practice and have some games onsite, then you don't necessarily, you just have to make sure that you schedule games during the daytime. And then, the last one is tennis lighting. Same thing, we plan to give you the six competition courts, but just the lighting piece for that is another 4.6 million. So, those things would be additive to the 150.6, if you wanted to go a little higher.
I have a question about space. So, let's say if we would decide, for whatever reason, that we wanted to do the bigger performing arts. So, where you currently have it situated now on the plan, if we did the bigger one, is there space?
Yeah, the plan actually shows the bigger one.
That's the bigger one in dotted lines.
Yeah, this one actually, that is the space required for the bigger one. So, we wanted to, for this image, we wanted to kind of show you the full end. You know, that's how big it would be in reality. If we don't, if you don't do the performing arts center, it's possible that that studio- Um, if we don't, if you don't do the performing arts center, it's possible that the, that, that, uh, studio theater could actually be just incorporated into the building itself. Or it could be, it could be in addition on this side, it would just be much smaller than what you're seeing here.
And, yeah, and also, I'm sorry, and also down the road, if it, if it, we get some big pot of money somewhere, it, could it be built onto what's already there to make it bigger?
Yes, yeah, um, one, one thing is if you decided to add the performing arts center later, uh, you know, once we get a certain way down the road, it'll be hard to take away the studio theater. So then you might end up having both, and then that would be a, a bigger all-in cost, cause now you've got both spaces instead of the either, either or that we're kinda offering.
And it's probably important to note that while that's six million in difference now, later on to build performing arts center in today's dollars is more like twelve to fourteen million. Uh, so if any of you have somebody who loves the arts and is wealthy and would like to have their name on a building for six million, they probably could make that happen right now, so.
Somebody to start begging.
I'm just saying, if that wealthy benefactor is there that wants to support the arts.
I know, just thinking out loud, um, from the last time we were talking about this, um, we did get a lot of pushback from the arts community when they heard it was just gonna be a black box theater and not a performing arts center. Kinda felt like they were getting slighted because of the athletic facilities and things and that they were just getting this, so. I do think we really need to take a hard look and make sure that what we are giving the arts community is gonna be something that they're, they're gonna be proud of and, and wanna be a part of, so I do think it's something we really need to look hard into, so.
Agreed, Rick, and you know, that space is used for so many other things as well, right, so larger meetings, class meetings, whatever you have. Uh, it, to not have something like that in a new school would be tough.
So I guess my question is, I don't know that I'm totally understanding what you mean by the smaller facility. So will, so could there be, cause when you're talking about, you know, you have the whole school come together for whatever they come together for?
Yeah, so like a studio, like what is that seating, like a studio theater, like?
Cause I don't know, what is central seating, for example, what, what is their theater?
What'd you build at twelve?
So, well, okay, so, the performing arts theater, twelve thousand square feet would get you seven hundred seats, that's the, that's the big theater. The, uh, studio theater, a black box theater, some people call it, um, that would hold two to three hundred comfortably, you could fit more than that if you kinda had, had it arranged in a certain way, but the, the difference there is that a studio theater, the main performance area is usually more in the middle and it's thought of as a studio in the round, and so the floor is flat, it's not raked, the way that, the way that a seating bowl would be in a main theater. And so you kinda line the, the perimeter with seating and then on either three sides or four usually, and then the performances are just different, they're, they're kind of more, they're more creative potentially, uh, but it's a little less formal.
In a school district this size, this would not be something where you would have all the kids, but the main gym is built for fifteen hundred, which that's, if you had something where you had everybody together, and that's where you'd have some kind of a all-school assembly, is that what you're speaking of? Is eighteen hundred?
The main gym is eighteen hundred and also the auxiliary gym has five hundred as well, so there are spaces like that within the building where you can do, uh, you know, the, a single class could go to the aux, aux gym or the full school could go to the main gym, or your, your entire district staff could go to the main gym. Um, it would be, those spaces would be big enough for that.
Okay, yeah, that's kinda what I was wondering about, okay.
I would just, I'll be devil's advocate. Uh, i- if we're going from somewhere that had eight hundred and then all of a sudden we're going to a new facility and all of a sudden we don't have any kind of an arts center, but what we do have seats two hundred, I feel like we're almost moving backwards. So yeah, it's, it's a chunk of money, but I feel like it's a necessity, I mean, I feel like for a new school and facility, I feel like that's something to, a necessity that, that needs to be part of it, the arts, so.
But what we did talk about was that Central's is still available for that.
Sure, yeah.
For larger.
Central and Lafayette and Benton, all of their auditoriums would still be, you know, usable still. But I think what you're saying, Rick, I understand.
Well, because Rick opened up.
I just had a question.
I wasn't going to say anything in the beginning, but everyone knows I'm a proponent of the arts. And the main thing that I was really, really, really interested in about a new high school is a performing arts center. Until I looked at the cost and I do get the hesitation on the cost, only on the other hand, I mean, I'm looking at the students, I'm looking at the population, and as Rick mentioned, like, as we're spending a lot of money on the sports, it's kind of a drag in order to be like, okay, well, we have to cut, let's immediately look at the arts and cut that first, you know what I'm saying, so. On the other hand, I do understand it is a whole lot of money, I, I do understand that.
So Asara, what were you saying?
So I just had a question about, um, maybe meeting somewhere in the middle. So if we can't afford the six million fine arts center and we obviously don't wanna go backwards like Rick said, is there somewhere in the middle where we can kinda make it better than what we have and not spend so much?
I think that where you try to find savings, if you wanted to do a performing arts center but do it more affordably, you'd just have to reduce the seating count. And so right now, with the amount of square footage that we have, it's a twelve thousand square foot space, so if you wanted to get that, and so instead of saying, okay, we're gonna go down thirty-six hundred square feet for the studio theater, we, you know, the difference between thirty-six hundred and twelve thousand, there's, there's a gap there, so if you said, okay, what can we get in a eight thousand square foot space? We could look at what a, a small performing arts center would be at eight thousand square feet, but I, I have a sense that the capacity will be lower than what you're wanting it to be.
I mean, in, in your mind, do you have an idea on a capacity, I know, I think Benton and Longford are somewhere in the four hundred and fifty student range, I know Central's thirteen hundred.
Yeah, and I, I felt like, I mean, that, I mean, I don't know, I know last year when Central did its one performance, I mean, I think did it sell, did it sell out on either of the, so I mean, that's why. So I, I'm thinking something at least what Central's holding.
What Central holds now is actually quite a bit bigger than even the full in.
You would be looking at a lot more money to get to that level.
I think you just extend the performances, correct?
Yeah.
Instead of three nights, could be four nights or five nights or something like that.
Once you get much larger than about seven hundred, then we start, you start getting into having to do a balcony, which then the balcony creates.
And I like that, I do, maybe having another night of performances. I just wanna be sure that, that the teachers and the production crew and everyone, like what they have to work with is gonna be a substantial upgrade from what they're working with now, that they really feel like when we put this together, like, okay, they didn't forget about us, like they're taking account of, of everything that we wanna do and they're not just focusing off on athletics or whatever, they feel like that their voices are being heard as well.
We have some remarkably creative performing arts people. And they do great jobs on the size they have. They've attended all of, at the different schools, a- and they're amazing using what they have given them. So if we can't do the big picture, I'm sure they're creative enough to shrink it or just design around it. It's almost a challenge to see how Ms. Bramlich would do with that theater in the round.
Yeah, and, and we could also, you know, the message could be that they use the, um, studio theater for their practices and their dress rehearsals and all that stuff, but then they do go over to Central for the actual performance. They could still have that thirteen hundred seat auditorium experience, but they would have to go to Central to do it, which I don't know if that's, you know, how they would pilot that, that.
That would be tricky if you're building the set and stuff.
Having to transport it.
Yeah.
I think it just takes a little bit away from the school pride too, for going.
Yeah, well, what if we, I'm thinking about school number two. Because that's the plan to build, I'm thinking big and dream of big here, that we, that we look at school number two. Is it possible at school number two that maybe we don't have a practice field, we eliminate something from the athletics and then the school number two has the bigger performing arts studio? I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas up there because in my mind, we're going to have two new schools, it's not going to be an option, so, um, I don't know, that's just something.
Yes, but the problem is then you're not creating two equal schools.
Yeah, but we will be academically. Which really, our whole job is academics. I'm not, and I'm certainly not opposed to any extracurricular anything, I think that's important because I think lots of times it keeps children in school. But really, our main goal is academic learning for children, and I think that's what the two schools will really help um, solve the problem we have with that right now, so, I don't know, just throwing that out there as an idea. We also have a budget, unfortunately.
And we, we know that the performing arts is important to you guys as it is to many districts, and we don't wanna just assume that that's the first place, like La- Latonya said, to, to go cutting. Um, and so that's why we did wanna show you that cost, it's, it's, it's something we know is a desire. It's something that may become a priority to the point where we say, okay, that five point nine million is something that we need to do. We either need to take it out of something else or we need to increase the budget, and so that's, um, at the end of the day, we're just, we're just gonna try and give you guys exactly what you ask us to give you. And, um, we'd be happy to put that back in if that's the directive we received from this group.
One, one comment that I would make, Robert, you can close your ears, but one thing that I would say in regards to this is that, that's a pretty low number. The additions are a pretty low number compared to what I thought they would be.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So, you know, and, and they just mentioned the word contingency a minute ago, and so there are opportunities, or there're gonna be opportunities along the way for you to recoup some of this stuff. So, I mean, I think if you go ahead and say that you want the performing arts center, you know, a hundred and fifty million versus a hundred and fifty-six million, there's really not, you know, we've always said along the way, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
I agree.
And, uh, you know, the lighting and the turf and, and those types of things will, will come through the contingency. I mean, you're not gonna come up with six million dollars, but those other things along the way, if it looks like there, there's an opportunity to put that stuff there. So if you go ahead and approve that you want the performing arts center, um, I would feel more comfortable because we've said all along that we, we said we wanna do it right. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
One, one of the things that, I apologize for just jumping in, but, um, uh, Ms. Lanning sort of said it, uh, to a certain extent, is that maybe you get a, a, a little bit of both. You know, we have twenty-five hundred seats for the home stands and five hundred seats for the visitors. We can find out what your numbers are and if your highest numbers at football games have been whatever they are, maybe there is a number there that you can always grow if you, if you look at those in the future.
I, I think those numbers are really high on the home side.
Yeah, so.
And, you know, visitors, that's why they're visitor.
There might be, yeah. They can stand, right?
And, and I will tell you, from the committees to a point, there were a whole lot of people at, at we, we were doing what we could to try to make sure that we were creating the academic piece, but also creating for the activities that there would be the practice opportunities onsite, which is something we lack in a lot of our activities right now. And so, so that's why, you know, the baseball and softball, you notice is not, it's not, it's not, uh, really, it's not a game-ready site, it is, is a practice site, because we're not having the turf, we're not having the lighting, we're not having the bleachers. As we were trying to figure out where we could try to get this closer to a hundred and fifty million and, and obviously, you know, the performing arts center was a big chunk there, so that was not, it wasn't like, well, first thing, let's, let's do that, it was, where can we, because this all-in was about one sixty, if I remember correctly.
About that, I can't remember the full number.
So, so we were trying to figure out as a group, as a committee, where could we pull some things to try to get closer to that hundred and fifty million number? I, I, I agree with, I mean, what Gabe said a minute ago, and I've said it, you know, a hundred times, we haven't done this since the forties. The nineteen forties, uh, and so, i- if we are gonna do it, yes, I would agree, we do it right, um, it's just, you know, again, like you said, it's.
Yeah, gotta be respectful of the number.
And I do think people would, if they could see, um, what a state-of-the-art black box looks like, then I think that would change the minds of some folks, but you're right, Rick, just by saying the word black box versus a performing arts center, I see where, where the discrepancies come from, but in the facility that you guys, uh, toured in Omaha, I mean, I thought that place was pretty cool.
It was, we couldn't see the auditorium very well, cause he couldn't get the lights turned on, but we did get the black box. Cause I just don't even know about that.
Yeah, right.
And I would agree, I say we go big or go home.
And I agree with the practice fields too, because we're dealing with children, a big majority of our children live in poverty. And so it's not like they own a car that they can drive, so they're piling in with somebody else or whatever, and I think that's important too. Absolutely, I think we're lucky, nothing has happened so far, probably. We, plus, not all children are sixteen to even be able to drive, so. I think it's exciting.
Got kind of a fun image to show you guys if you're done with the questions, um, so we did, we kinda redid an aerial image here. So you can see the athletic fields up in the top end of the picture, you can see the baseball and softball just kinda peeking their way up at the top on the north side of that creek, the, the heavily wooded areas, the creek. Um, and so you can just kinda see from a massing standpoint, we haven't, we haven't started talking to you guys about what you like from an architectural styling standpoint or different materials or anything, but we just wanted to show you kind of how a building could start to develop on this site. Um, and so you've got the, starting, I guess, starting from the right, moving left, two of your pathways would be in that first kind of mass of a building on the right, and then where the, the roof drops down, that would be, might be like a collaboration zone that students can, from different pathways could come together. Um, and then as the roof pops back up in the middle, that would be the second two pathways. Then goes down again, uh, to the main entry, that would be your main entry, your, uh, community commons, your, your lunch room, your pre-function space for your gym, uh, and for your, uh, studio theater, if that's where it ends up being. And then the black area, the black box there would be, um, not to be confused with the studio theater, just the, the black part of the building, um, would be where your basketball stadium, your basketball court is, your auxiliary gym, your weight facility, your, um, wrestling, uh, your s- studio theater if you have one, the admin, the kitchen, all of those shared program spaces would all be in that black part of the building there. So from a material standpoint, you might love or hate the things we're showing now, but we, we'll get to that point, but we just wanna show you kinda what, what this could turn into as the weeks and months go on. Anything else for me or for anybody on our team?
Uh, just a quick question on, on parking, um, I guess how many spots and how might that compare to today's Central?
Uh, I don't know the number at Central, somebody else might have that number, but this, this shows, um, this front parking lot, I think it was in the six hundred and seventy spot range, uh, inclusive of, there's, there's a couple more parking lots, there's one right here, um, actually, I'm gonna go to the site plan for this a little bit better. Uh, so I think we have six hundred and seventy-ish here, uh, about another hundred and twenty here, another fifty or so here and another sixty or so here, so all in, it was, um, I wanna say it was eight hundred and sixty-seven.
Yeah, Mike, when I used to do tags, because we were short on parking, we've added a little bit of parking at Central, but we were a little over we were between four and five hundred, and so I'm gonna say Central's probably somewhere in the six to seven hundred range, so.
So this, that.
This, this should, that, that number should be, I mean, especially if we're talking a little bit fewer students, so.
Good, good, yeah, you know, at Central, a lot of people park on the street, you know, and so that.
Oh, I know.
You probably have a good point, Robert, and I don't mean to get in the weeds here, but, but we are talking about a school, building a school that's roughly these size of Central or a little bit smaller than Central is right now, so it's not a, it's not some sort of a mega huge.
Cause we are gonna have two.
That, that, that's an interesting point that you bring up though, because i- if you guys have a number in mind of a number, quantity of parking spaces that you think you do need from a day-to-day basis or from a, uh, you know, Friday night lights standpoint, if we're showing more parking than what you need, uh, parking's actually very expensive. Or, but black tops cost anywhere from, what, three to nine thousand dollars per parking stall, it's, it's a lot of money. And so if we're showing way more than you need, you could, that could be a pretty big number that could come out of your budget.
I don't blow the jar, but we oughta think about it.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we need to look into, and I, I think the home seating, uh, on the football stadium is something we can look at too. And these conversations. And these conversations obviously aren't gonna stop tonight. I mean, they're gonna continue, uh, through the time and every week.
You could probably look at the parking at the baseball softball complex, and that could maybe be instead of asphalt, you know, a less expensive material there. Could be gravel, I mean, you know. It's gravel at Missouri Western at their baseball and softball.
The only issue there, that might be city requirements.
Yeah, Missouri Western's got gravel at their baseball and softball field, so I can't imagine.
I can't.
This would be an issue.
Obviously, I think that's the.
Yeah.
I mean, that was part of the discussions.
Yeah.
And then in- entry and exit into the building, mo- most of our districts we're finding only want one primary entry. So this would be your primary entry, your security recipe will be right, right there. Your admin and your school resource officer and everybody will be right off of that entry. But if you had, say, your art classrooms were down on the lower level, you could have, the art teacher could have a card key access where she or he could take students out into an art yard out behind the building and get back in without having to go back around. Potentially, but those do- those doors would be locked theoretically all day long. Uh, you'd have to have that key card entry. That's, that's what most of our districts are doing. Um, and we'll have discussions with you guys about how you wanna approach security, cause everybody does it a little bit differently. But, um, and then this, this entry here would be if you do do the performing arts center, we gave a secondary entry that's like a performing arts thing. So in the evening, you know, if you didn't want people wandering in the halls of your building, you would be able to shut down the building at different points. Like there'd be a door here that keeps everybody out of the athletic, uh, they're the academic wing, but would allow them to get to this part of the building. Or there could be a wall, a door here that keeps everybody out of this entire part of the building. All they can do is get to the performing arts center. So we, we've thought about how those things might get divided up from a secure standpoint.
And anymore, uh, you do have activities, athletic activities going on, same time you have fine arts stuffs going on. So having two entry points is always a good, and keeping them far enough apart so that you don't have this, uh, conglomeration of folks all in the same place.
And i- is there any accommodation for, uh, space for industrial arts, or is our strategy more that goes to Hilliard?
We do have metal and woods in, in this.
You do?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Some early, uh.
Correct, correct, not, not really.
So we have twelve hundred, I think we're twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square foot classroom.
Okay, I mean, just a exposure type thing.
That's the word.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Introductory, so they could be going, they would spend time in Hilliard after.
Correct, if they moved on.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Well.
I did have a question regarding, um, the entry. Someone just give me a thumbs up and let me know if you can hear me.
Yes, we hear you.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, so, um, I know we had talked about the two entry, um, ways and maybe it's safer, but is there a possibility for a third? The only reason I ask is because, um, we did have to add, I think, an entry and an exit to Carden Park and Oak Grove because of the traffic jam that was happening there. So if there was ever a need to add a third entry, is there a possibility for that?
You're, you're not gonna have the same issues at a high school that you have with an elementary because of, there aren't gonna be people lined up to pick kids up at the end of the day. We, we don't have those kind of, of traffic issues at the high schools. Uh, we have those at the elementaries and it's because of, it's because of the number of parents picking up and that's what we're having to fix at Carden and at Oak Grove now. But this, this traffic flow will be more than sufficient for high school.
Okay, so you don't feel like in the future we would need a third?
You guys are experts, but.
We, I mean, we have schools that have one entry to six entries, you know, and whatever tends to work for that school. And new, new build schools, uh, we often will do two primary entries because we do see a benefit in separating, uh, vehicle driving students versus bus students because that can be a bit of a traffic jam. So, um, one thing is we've got a pretty, pretty sizable stacking lane where you can see where the, this winds out to a third lane and goes all the way to there. So that might be for vehicle drop off and then maybe bus, buses could maybe come up and drop off in this loop here. Uh, or, you know, there's a number of ways we could do that. We could also develop the site differently. This is, this is our first stab with, um, a good amount of input, but not the amount of input that we'll be able to get from you over the next several months as we design it.
But, but sorry, you're right. We'll definitely want to address that ingress and egress because we've seen what happens when that doesn't get addressed properly.
Yeah, thank you.
So, you know, I'm just making one last comment, just know that this is a everyday conversation. Uh, we'll continue these conversations tomorrow and the next day and, and these conversations will take place over the next four months and even farther, you know, after the, uh, passage of the bond. So, you know, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to, um, reach out to myself or Dr. Seagrist and we can involve these folks and get the experts to answer the specifics that you need. I appreciate all the dialogue tonight. That's exactly the way I was hoping this would go. So, uh, if you guys are good with it, we'll transition over to, uh, LJ Hart. We appreciate DLR and Nav Holtz being here and, and we're looking forward to a partnership moving forward.
Thank you.
That's true. We appreciate the opportunity. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Neil, you're in. I know you guys are a little more boring, but, uh, we'll.
A lot more boring.
We don't have any drawings, nothing.
A lot more boring. Let's, let's get it out.
Lot of cricket numbers, lot of cricket numbers. Gotta find another five point nine.
Listen well.
I wrote them down just to make sure that.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, first thing we're gonna go over, uh, if we could back up a couple of pages, there's, there's page two.
On the left side.
Oh. That one. Ah, technology, great. Uh, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, real tickled to be here. Uh, the first thing we're gonna walk through is kind of a forty thousand foot view of some financing options. Uh, when we were up here last month, uh, it seemed to be the will of the board was to look at, uh, kinda break this problem down into two. Uh, find a hundred and fifty million dollars to finance for a project in the short term. And then, uh, also with an eye towards the future for a second phase and to have room, uh, to do something else down the road. And so here are three options, uh, that hopefully will get you, uh, to those goals. All three of these are a hundred and fifty million dollar issues. Uh, the differences, uh, the top two, uh, divide this in, in a two and the bottom one divides it into three separate issues. The top one is a little more, uh, friendly to the taxpayer, uh, forty-two cent increase. But bear in mind with that, your, your bonding capacity takes a little bit longer to rebound because you're not putting as much money in to your debt service. So if you wanna be aggressive in recovering your bonding capacity, then as you go down, uh, go down that sheet and clear at the bottom, then there's seventy-five cents. Um, which obviously is gonna be a little bit more of a burden, but it does, uh, it does restore your bonding capacity much quicker. And those are the big ideas, I think, that are important to pick out, uh, of this particular sheet. And I'm gonna turn it over to Neil and he's gonna walk through some particulars.
Yeah, I will mention, just on, on this slide alone, the, the bottom part, it says fifty, fifty, ninety. That is a typo. It's supposed to be fifty, fifty, fifty. So the three installments, fifty million dollars a piece gets you to a hundred and fifty million total. Uh, the other, the other thing is, uh, just to keep everything simple and uniform, I picked a twenty thirty-three bonding capacity. Uh, basically from our previous conversations, we're looking at this, this first phase, uh, being open, uh, August of twenty twenty-eight. That would then give you five years to then have to regroup and basically do the second phase or look to start doing the second phase. Five.
You said five?
Yeah, on top of it being open in twenty-eight. So it'd be a twenty thirty-three bond issue is what I have across the board. So it's eight years from right now. Um, and so that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive into each one of these scenarios just, uh, a little more in-depth. So the, the first option there, again, seventy million in July of twenty-five, eighty million in, uh, March of twenty twenty-six, totaling that one fifty. Again, this was asking for a forty-two cent increase or a ninety-five cent debt service fund levy, uh, total. Yeah, sorry.
Maybe, maybe you're going there. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm just like, so for that, you know, what always makes sense as we speak to this kind of thing is, hey, what's this gonna cost? Person owns a two hundred thousand dollar home.
I, I, yeah, I got that in there.
Perfect, thank you.
In a few slides.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
So, no, you're all right. Uh, and again, ask questions if you, if you want to. Uh, it's, it's the best way to, to present for me. Um, so this is that scenario. You have on the far left-hand side, and this is on that next slide, your total revenue coming in. Again, that's from the ninety-five cent total levy. Uh, you've got your subtotal of your debt payments that you have outstanding right now. Then I've added in schedule seven, schedule eight, which is seventy million in twenty-five, eighty million in twenty-six. Those are totaled up on the far right-hand side, your total fiscal year payments. Uh, in the short end, they're about twelve and a half million, then they go thirteen. They kinda graduate a little bit out to almost fifteen million dollars a year of total payments. And then you have your balances next to that. So that's your balance as of the end of the year after you make your payments for that specific fiscal year. Um, so what this shows is you can do a hundred and fifty million dollars at ninety-five cents. Where you're running into the problem is that second phase. So as you can see, your balances are growing. They're not growing enough for you to do a large bond issue within the next eight to ten to fifteen years. Right? Uh, so that's where this option we had last time, you know, we kinda went back to the drawing board. So what this shows is the bonding capacity in that, uh, April twenty thirty-three year, okay, would be ninety-two million dollars. Again, that's on the next slide, sorry. I don't even know where this laser pointer is. Is it right here? Top, awesome. So this ninety-two million right here, that is your general obligation bonding capacity by state law, fifteen percent. Okay, of that, we would wanna not get all the way there, so about ninety million. But as I have noted over here, that would require an additional tax increase of twenty-five cents at that time. So in twenty thirty-three, if you went back to the voters for ninety million, you'd have to raise it twenty-five cents at that point in time in order to do that. Again, this is assuming one and a half percent growth in assess, or sorry, one and a quarter percent growth in assessed valuation. So you've grown about two point four percent the last five years. Um, so it could always be a little better, uh, but that's, that's what I have right now as far as that option at ninety-five cents. Okay? This is a sample cost table for the forty-two cents. So I have it broken down and I had to kinda separate them, but residential, personal, commercial, agriculture and, uh, and then agricultural property. So the question as far as what does it cost for residential property of forty-two cents? Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is a hundred and nineteen dollars per year. And then you break that down, uh, to a monthly cost, it's right about ten bucks, nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. That's an additional cost to what they're currently paying right now. And then obviously you can go through the different property types for, you know, different cars, uh, any type of business and then land. And then if you have any, you know, uh, like farm equipment, uh, livestock, those types of, those types of things are on that right-hand side. Okay? I'm gonna move forward to, uh, I know, I think Dr. Edgar was the one last time that, that introduced the sixty cents a- as kind of an option of what to ask for, uh, in order to build back bonding capacity a little quicker. So again, same amounts, seventy million, eighty million. The difference is on that seventy million, the first installment, uh, because you have a dollar thirteen levy, uh, you're actually pushing principal forward in order to pay it off quicker to build back your bonding capacity. So, um, where you had on the back, uh, the twenty forty-six timeframe on the last issue, you were about fourteen million dollars in payments. Now you're looking about twelve, or sorry, eleven point nine million in payments, but up in the front end on that total payments column, from twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty-three, your payments are about fifteen and a half and then they drop off to about fourteen million a year. You're pushing that forward to build back your bonding capacity to do a second phase. I have it in that twenty thirty-three timeframe. So this scenario at a dollar thirteen total debt service fund levy, gets your bonding capacity restored in twenty thirty-three to that hundred and sixteen million, a hundred and sixteen point seven million dollars. Okay? Without raising the tax increase at that point in time, you could do the total amount of that, about a hundred and fifteen million dollars.
So basically with inflation and everything like that, we'd probably have to go back to the public for fif- I don't know, fifty?
Well, so at that point in time, it would have to be something other than GO.
Cause that's the most.
To make up the difference. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and again, if you grow at two and a half percent instead of one and a quarter, that's gonna be better than what we're, what we're showing here. So, uh, but, but I guess the whole point is if you ask for the sixty upfront, right? You don't have to ask for a second tax increase in twenty thirty-three or whenever that second phase is happening. You've already asked for it upfront. You built your bonding capacity back in order to do that.
Cause it really becomes sixty-seven then if you have to go back and ask for the quarter at that time.
See, cause you're, so there have, you're looking at three different things on the forty-two cents compared to just two different things, just like you're, like you're dealing with right now. And if you wanna look at the comparison, the, the no taxes where I would look at, so your no taxes eighty million and then it grows to a hundred and fifteen million in this option. That hundred and fifteen million should, you shouldn't be asking the public for anymore because you have the built-in thirty-five million dollars there to make up for that. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That should help you keep up with inflation. And even the next one, obviously, you'll see is.
Yeah.
Is even better. And I think one thing, and Mike and I were just talking as a side note, I think that you really need to pay attention to what it costs the taxpayer because forty-two cents and seventy-five cents just, and he'll explain those here in just a minute, but pay specific attention to that. Because really that, that's what, that's what matters, right? The, the dollar amount that comes out of people's pocket.
For sure.
And you'll see it's pretty valid.
Yeah, and so with the sixty cents here, your hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, hundred and seventy-one dollars on a annual basis in addition. And then fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents broken down as a month, on a monthly basis. So you were at about ten dollars a month. You're now at fourteen twenty-five a month on a house that, that costs a hundred and fifty thousand or a praise value, a hundred and fifty thousand. It's usually how I equate it. It's like, yeah, how many, how many coffee shops is, is that?
Yeah, I was just pulling some of those out and I, I know that, uh, home selling prices don't equate to tax valuation.
Correct.
However, houses are going crazy.
Yeah.
Right? So I just looked at the two hundred thousand dollar level.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, thirteen thirty for the, uh, forty-two cent increase. Nineteen dollars for.
The sixty.
The sixty cent increase and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for the, for the, um, seventy-five cent increase.
Yeah.
So bottom line is between your three choices, uh, cheapest to most expensive, if you own a two hundred thousand dollar home, it's ten bucks a month.
Yeah.
And you're putting the district in a good spot.
Right.
If you go with, if you go with the forty-two cents, I mean, you might feel like that, that's what you're doing best for the taxpayers. But if you look at it seven years down the road, that's not what's best for the taxpayers.
When you're gonna ask, and you're gonna have to ask for twenty-five cents at that time too.
Well, and, and it.
There, T, you're in a good spot.
And then it, it lets everyone know, you know, that you are gonna be able to build a new school in X amount of years, no matter what, if you ask to get the money now.
Yeah, and it, Robert, to your point, you're asking for a tax increase in twenty thirty-three, but you're probably gonna have to ask for another one because you gotta make up the difference of, you can only bond ninety million dollars at that point in time. Whatever it costs to build that second high school, you're gonna have to, you know, make up the difference there.
Yeah.
Through a lease financing. So you're gonna have to have another revenue stream outside of just that additional twenty-five you're, you're asking for. Um, so the last option, uh, is fifty, fifty and fifty, three different installments, asking to go to a dollar twenty-eight, which is a seventy-five cent levy increase. Again, I kinda point to that from twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty-three. I've got your payments anywhere from eighteen, or sorry, seventeen point two million to eighteen point five million dollars. Pushing as much principal up as we can to restore bonding capacity. And on the back end, settled around eight point six four million each year, which gives you the ability to come back and do a larger bond issue quicker. With that, the bonding capacity builds back to a hundred and thirty-nine million in twenty thirty-three with the ability to do a hundred and thirty-seven five without asking for an additional tax levy increase at that time. So, you know, a- again, it's, it's all about what the taxpayer is willing to vote yes for. Um, and obviously you all have a better gauge on that than I, than I do. So it, we, we talked about, obviously, the, the forty-two cents is the, the most taxpayer friendly, but also does not put the district in the best spot to finish a phase two project for a high school. This one is obviously the least taxpayer friendly because they're paying a little bit more. However, it does put you in a spot where, again, you could say, we're, we're gonna be able to build a high school or, you know, you might have to find some alternative funding with that, but it's gonna be a lot less than if you had ninety million dollars to bond instead of a hundred and thirty-seven five.
And, and I think an important point, you, you touched on it, but we, you ran this with a very conservative one point two five percent increase in AB. If, if, even if that runs two percent, which I think we said over the last five years, we've been averaging two point four.
Yeah.
Even if that runs at two percent, that one thirty-seven five number's gonna be significantly larger.
Yeah.
You know, that's one thing that I was gonna say, Robert, uh, to kinda segue into that. Um, between now and the next board meeting, I know it's easy for you to plug these in. Can you run a one point seven five and a two point two five?
Yeah.
For the Board of Education, just so they see, and what was the assessed valuation in the last five years? Can you tell them what that was? So, I mean, do you have that in front of you or?
Uh, as far as like the actual number of it or growth?
Growth.
On average, it's two point four two.
Two point four two, and we're still gonna be at a conservative number of two point two five. So if you guys think that that's okay, let's have him run a one seven five and a two two five, just so you can see, it's gonna be a substantial gain because our assessed valuation is a big number.
Yeah, and I think I was looking, obviously going up, you know, the, the fifteen cents, it's gonna, it generates quite a bit more money each year, which is obviously the ability to pay that off quicker.
And that's the other piece.
Well, I just think that that sixty cent number at one point seven five and two point two five is gonna be a little more appealing.
Uh, well, absolutely.
Than it is right now.
Yeah.
And so I think to give them the full scope, that sixty, you know, that sixty cent number, I'm not gonna say, I mean, I would love to recommend the seventy-five cents. But I think if you run the one seven five and the two two five, the sixty is gonna be enough and the district will be in good financial shape to make that decision.
Well, and I think too, that's some, I mean, we've, we've, since Gabe's been in this spot, we've tried really hard also. When available, we've done some prepayment as well, which also increases that much more quickly. And I, I could see that being something that, you know, the people who come into this after us would continue to do that when available, so.
We had to, we had to catch up.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want that person to have to catch up.
Yeah. Um, I'm not gonna go through this, but this is there for you again to see what the seventy-five cents does. And then lastly, the very last page on there, uh, it's similar to what we showed you last month as far as, uh, levies around for those that have above seven thousand students. And then basically on the, that right-hand side, where, what those steps would put you at as far as the total tax levy goes. And you could kinda rank that to see where, where that would fall amongst those, those districts. So, um, really even, even that, that sixty cents, five point five one six three, uh.
Between, uh, Kansas City.
Yeah. Between North Kansas City and Park Hill.
Yeah.
So you're, you're still not moving up, you know, towards that top, 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 so.
And your debt service is still considerably lower than North Kansas?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few of those, um, you know, metropolitan areas that, that do have, uh, quite a bit higher debt service fund levy, obviously. So. Questions, anything? Obviously, we'll, we'll rerun those with, with a little larger growth projection, uh, for the meeting on the twenty, is it seven? But we'll make sure you have it before that, but. And then, uh, I guess depending on that, whatever the ballot language, whatever you want that to be, as far as, obviously, we know, it's probably, is it gonna be more than a hundred and fifty millions or gonna be a hundred and fifty million flat?
One fifty-seven?
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, yes.
I think, I think the last one we ran was.
Yes.
The last large one was one oh seven?
Yeah.
But, um, obviously, those are things we need to figure out prior, really prior to the meeting, kinda have an idea. That way we can have those documents ready for you because of the next day is that filing deadline to get those to the county.
Yeah, let me work with, uh, DLR and Nav Holtz and that team over the next couple of days to maybe back off some seats and run some scenarios there.
Yeah.
And then I'll get back to you on that.
Perfect.
How's that sound? I'll, I'll, we'll get you, we'll get you a firm number, right, guys?
Yep.
Okay.
And I know one thing I'm concerned about, I hope.
The parking, I mean, that, I think that that's something we definitely need. Nine thousand dollars a spot, I mean, we definitely need to look at that. We can go to, we can go to Central and see exactly what we have and, uh, find out how many issues there are with that, so.
Yeah, and I, I hope I'm not jumping ahead on anything, but one thing I'm concerned about is with the ballot language, um, you know, we're, this is gonna come up on us fast and we need to do this in April. And, um, I just really want the ballot language not to leave any doubt in people's mind that like, oh, well, they're not being totally clear on where this is gonna be. Like, they could put this wherever they want. Like, I wanna be sure that the public understands, this is the area we want the school in. Here's where, like, and I don't know how narrow we can get that, but I just don't want it, there to be any doubt in their mind, like, well, the board can just put this anywhere they want. Like, I don't want them to think that. I want them to know, like, here's the areas that we want this school to go in. And this is what we're, cause this is, I mean, this is huge. It's gonna happen in April and it's coming fast.
Yeah, we'll try to have all that wording for you before you have to make a decision on the twenty-seven.
Okay. And then we would have till April to lift out even more detail.
Yeah.
As things become available.
Exactly, yeah.
Because I think they, they said it tonight in the, uh, very beginning of their presentation, we have three sites that we have kinda narrowed it down to. We have to figure out what the verbiage looks like. We'll let their team work with LJ Hart on what, how the wording needs to come up and we'll make sure.
I think as long as it puts like an area, then we should be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, an address, you know, isn't needed, you know, but.
Exact, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, maybe just like the region of.
Yeah, the South thirty-six, you know, whatever that looks like.
Right.
Yeah. And then obviously if we want to say, I know we mentioned something about mentioning a phase two within the ballot language, uh, that's another thing that we would need to know from our standpoint, whether you wanna include that or not.
Okay.
Okay.
That's.
And I also think, you know, that during the campaign, it can be discussed as well, you know, like, we chose X and L because of this, you know?
Yeah.
Because of a phase two, cause we want everybody to know, you know, it's not only like a one and done, you know? Like, as we mentioned in the meeting, a majority of us in the phase two part aren't gonna be around at the phase two, you know, but if they're pre- as prepared, as magic, if we're able to make them now, it'll make it a lot easier to keep on the plan and for things not to change.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are just everything we need as far as for that meeting, so.
Perfect.
Awesome.
So exciting.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your work. Thank you. Anything else that the long range plan update that you have to do?
Nope, I don't think so. You know, I, one thing that I would say is that I really do appreciate the dialogue. Like I mentioned a minute ago, I know there was a lot of angst last week and there were questions and, and, um, we just have to stick to the plan, right? And, uh, that's the reason why St. Joe has, um, not been successful in the past because they have diverted from the pant, plan. Uh, just trust the process, stick to the plan, and I, I think we have a good plan. And I think tonight you feel a little more comfortable, uh, than you did last week. And, um, I'll do everything I can to make you feel more comfortable, but I'm not gonna give you anything that's gonna be false information.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, if there are no more other questions, comments or concerns, our next board meeting, it will be January the twenty-seventh at five thirty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Would you call the votes for Ms. Donner?
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.